It is now 6:30 and I am calling the special call meeting to order. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? A motion has been made to call the fiscal year 24 taxpayer mileage public hearing to order by Ms. Jones and second by Sandra Jackson-Lett. We are here tonight to receive input from the community on the tax mileage rate proposed for the next school year. The superintendent has recommended a mileage rate of 20 meals, which means that the mileage rate will decrease by one meal from last year. We encourage and value public input into the school system's budget process. This is the last of three public hearings where the public will have an opportunity to have a voice. The first two hearings were held Thursday, July the 13th, 9:00 a.m. and at 5:30 p.m. The administration and the board will consider all the input received at the hearings prior to adopting a mileage rate tonight during our regular scheduled meeting. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? That sound like a triangle would need to go for cover. Okay. Okay, no one is here that wants to speak to the board. The public hearing will conclude at 7:00 p.m., everyone.
No, we didn't vote.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Akita Palmer.
Okay, a motion has been first by Jones and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion of the agenda? All in favor? Motion carries six to one. I mean, six to zero. Okay, Heather not here, okay. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? Once again, if you want to address the board, okay. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents. Your concerns today will not normally be addressed. Ms. Charlotte Geller?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may, Ms. Geller, let me just say that, of course, it probably goes without saying now, but we are under severe thunderstorm warning and watch, and it may become necessary at some point to activate our drills. So just know that in advance, but at this time, we can proceed as scheduled, okay?
So let me just clarify for safety purposes. In the event that we do need to exit this facility because of the windows, we will exit to your left and to my right into that hallway and proceed to your left for cover. You got it? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Go right ahead, Ms. Geller.
Thank you, Chairman Brown, Board of Members, Superintendent. These are really just general remarks, not specifically about the mileage rate. Y'all, you've reduced the mileage, you did a reduction in force, you're taking money out of your savings, your fund balance, but your budget is still more than last year. Of course, you know, if there was, you wouldn't have to have these public hearings if you took the rollback rate of 17 point whatever, which you did a couple of years ago. One thing I wanted to point out that in the last three years, the local percentage portion of your budget has increased. In FY, year FY '22, the local percentage was 39.3, and FY '23 just completed, the local percent was 40.36. This year's local budget percent is 46.2. So that's up almost 6% over the previous year. It's putting more burden on the local residents to fund your budget. And I don't know, to get the state to put in more money, that would have to go above your heads to the state legislators and senator. I like some of the did you knows that were done at the public hearing. Superintendent's comparative context on the data that's there. It seems good that 20% of the teachers hired this year are teachers that left this system and are now returning to RCPS, and I hope you encourage those other factors that will make teachers come back to this, to this system being accessible, supportive, and that their voice is heard. So, and then looking at the starting teacher pay for FY '24, even though we're fourth or third from the top, at some point, everybody has to stop trying to keep up with the Joneses. I can't keep up with the Joneses. So just because another system is increasing their teacher pay doesn't mean that you have to do pay. There are other ways that you can attract and keep teachers. All right, I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Jones and second by Ms. North. All in favor? Okay, thank you. The meeting is concluded at 7:00 p.m. Seven to zero votes. It is now 7:00. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our and in thy.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion has been made to approve the agenda by Ms. Jones, is that right? Okay. And second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Do you have any visitors that wish to speak? Okay, there are no visitors who would like to address the board. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Oats and Dr. Smith Dixon for a cabinet update.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Brown. We only have one presentation scheduled for our regular board session, and we'll ask Ms. Megan Siago to come forth.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair North Duncan, excuse me, Dr. Oats and board. I am here to present some Office of Student So I'm going to take you on a little journey this evening. I promise to keep it brief. They say that the journey is more important than the destination. So we will be taking a journey from July of 22, when I moved into this role, till July of 2023, where we are this evening. We're all about continuous improvement, and so we know that there are areas for growth. If we focus on the problem areas, we don't find the solution. So I'm going to take you on the journey of improvement that we've It's when we have our student registration rush. We don't like to use that word rush. It's our own four-letter word. So we've repurposed it to mean reaching unlimited student registration heights. It's the time of year when all of our families complete their annual updates and also enroll new students. So we were very busy in August getting all of the students enrolled, approving all of our annual student updates, making sure all of our data was clear in Infinite Campus for our students. In September, we jumped right into debriefing what went well in July and August and what didn't go so well. If you were around in person or even driving by, you saw many, 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 many families lined up outside the boardroom getting their kids enrolled. And so we wanted to address how can we make that better in the future? And we jumped then right in in October to revisions to our online registration application. As you're likely aware, our online, our registration process is online. We're in the 21st century. We're a 21st century one-to-one district. But we know that there are barriers to this for some of our families. So we wanted to see what revisions we could make to the application itself to make the process a little bit easier. Looking at what August looked like for us. I know it's small, and I hope you guys have the presentation. You can see it more closely. In August of 2022, we approved 1,394 new student applications. And within those applications, it was 1,943 students. That means the student registration team actually processed, reviewed, processed, and approved each of those applications to get those students enrolled in school. We also approved 1,841 annual updates. And this is where each of our families has to complete an easier, smaller version of the online registration to make sure the phone numbers, addresses, emergency contacts, all of that are still the same. So you can see, we don't like that word rush, but it really is a time for us to reach those unlimited heights. As we moved into the fall and winter, we continued those online registration application revisions. We partnered with Learning Support with ESOL, McKinney Vento, Pre-K to make sure that we were capturing the appropriate information we need on the application to identify students for all of those different services. And in November, we had a run-through with our CPS staff. We let those of us that are somewhat familiar with the application complete one as if we were enrolling a student ourselves to make sure we hadn't made any errors, we didn't have any typos. In January, we opened that up to some stakeholders. We brought some parents and other community members into the boardroom, and they were able to complete the online application to give us even more feedback to make sure it was as user-friendly as possible. Some specifics. We tried to include clear instructions throughout, keeping in mind that people don't read instructions. Many people don't read instructions, so we didn't want them to get too lengthy. But we wanted to make sure we included the most important information, highlighting and bold whenever we could. We have a lot of addresses in our student information system that we've been just adding to and adding to since we started using Infinite Campus. And so we are starting or continuing the process of cleaning those up. So we, we updated the home address section so families won't be adding new addresses to our system. If their address does not exist in Infinite Campus, they're putting in a placeholder address, 000, address not found, and we are entering their address manually in hopes of correcting some of those 123 Main Street, 123 Main Street Northeast, 123 Northeast Main Street, so that we have just clear, accurate addresses in our student information system. We made some changes with our emergency contacts last year, and so we wanted to be sure that we clearly defined what an emergency contact is in our application. So hopefully that will avoid some of the confusion we had last year with our process. And we updated our student services questions. So that goes back to the collaboration we had with Learning Support and the other departments to be sure we're capturing the most critical information so our student services can maintain seamlessly when they come to Rockdale County Public Schools. We also added a residency verification pleet for students who will be in seventh grade for the 23-24 school year. We recognized the need for this, and we heard the requests to update residency. We have families that have been enrolled for many years and haven't updated their residency. We chose to start with one grade level, which is about 1,200 students plus siblings, about 1,200 that'll be in seventh grade plus their siblings, and it's a work in progress. We are requiring those two residency documents, but we're also allowing students to maintain their enrollment for now until we get those documents because we know that mass withdrawing everyone who hasn't brought in their documents at this time will just cause much chaos for our middle schools. So that'll continue to be a work in progress for the first couple of months of school as the families upload, continue to upload those documents. We made our buttons, those blue upload buttons, as big and clear as we could. And while this seems really small, one of the biggest pieces of feedback we got is that families didn't know how to get from one page to the next. So we made the next button a lot bigger and more bold, and it has made a really big difference. Sometimes it's little things that go a long way. As we moved into 2023, we had training for school staff in February. We expect all of our families to use Parent Portal to get their grades, to get their attendance, and to complete their annual updates. But unfortunately, sometimes when parents ask questions, the answer they get is, oh, I don't know anything about Parent Portal. We need to alleviate that problem with a solution. So we trained school staff, and we're actually training more school staff tomorrow. We, in March, we went to the Early Learning Center, and we started enrolling Pre-K students. And I'm excited to say we're 95-plus percent complete with enrolling our Pre-K students. So they will be ready for day one to start their school year. We just have a couple who need to turn in a few documents. So we, that was a great success working with Shawna Miller and her team. We also opened the annual updates and the new application March 9th, about a month earlier than we have before, to get families to start filling them out. And we launched our new website. I'll show you that in just a moment. April to May, we had a competition among schools where we asked the schools to really push getting those annual updates completed. And then we awarded the principals with the highest percentages or with the highest growth. And as a result, many of our schools were beyond 20% completion of annual updates when we closed out the school year. While 20% seems low, this year, this time last year, we were really only at about 20%. And we got to that level by the end of May last year. And then we also hit the road at some community and school events. So let me tell you a little more about that. We worked very closely with Michelle Kim to make our website more user-friendly. So I encourage you to explore the student registration website as if you were going to enroll a child or if you had a question, and let me know how to make it even more user-friendly. It's the language I speak every day, so I see the information because I put it there. But if there's something that's missing, let us know so we can put it in a user-friendly place. You can see there's a YouTube video linked. It's a 20-minute video that walks you through the entire online registration application. We hit the road. I told you about Pre-K. We had a, we had a room at Parent Academy for parents to complete annual updates. We were at the Unidos Latino Association Health Fair. That's what that picture is there. We also attended end-of-the-year events at Peaks Chapel Elementary. We offered our services for all the schools for their end-of-the-year activities. Peaks Chapel took us up on it, and guess what? They have maintained the lead since last spring. They're at 60-plus percent with their annual updates. So great job for Peaks. And we've also been present at all of the HR onboarding events in June and July. Employees are parents too, and we don't want an employee to miss work on the first day of school because their five-year-old isn't enrolled in school yet. And then, of course, we communicated with the families. So the Be Ready for 23-24 School Year flyer went home in English and Spanish with all K through eighth-grade students. And then we made copies available at the high school. You see, that's just a screenshot from one of the websites. We've made it front and center to be sure that the word got out. Here we are, June, July, and August. I mentioned the onboarding. We've been processing, processing, processing as the applications come in. And I'm going to share some of the numbers with you in just a minute. We have training for our summer rush staff. We bring in temporary staff, both to help us process and also to be physically present here in the boardroom so we can handle the volume of people who come in as we go into our 23-24 student registration rush. This gives you a picture. If you look at the column for July 5th and the column for July 12th, the families finally started filling out those applications after the July 5th call or around that week. We've been, we've been spreading the word since the beginning of April, since our application opened in March. But you see the big jump that we see right here in July. And that's why we don't love to think of that four-letter word rush, but it is what it is. Our families do think about back to school when we get to the middle of July. So we have a lot of work to do, and we'll continue to do that. And as we head into this year's rush, we'll be moving into the boardroom tomorrow as soon as this meeting concludes. We'll be taking over the boardroom for a couple of weeks. Our extended staff will be here Monday. We have evening and weekend teams that are processing, 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 so we can get all of our students in and continue to reach unlimited student registration heights. We're also continuing our partnership with KidStock on Wheels, and they'll be here with us for part of the rush to get families signed up and also so they can be close by or possibly even on-site for some of those medical documents that hold parents up sometimes. I know I talked fast, but are there any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am.
I know. You know, I was several hats in the community, but I still have a concern that the people are getting into registration, and I don't, they're not, KidDoc is not mentioned, then they get over to the health department. And I mean, I guess where are we missing that at, where they're not being told about KidDoc? When we paid KidDoc all this money for partnership, and we're not utilizing it? Because if someone come here for registration, they shouldn't be told, they shouldn't be told to go to the health department to get all this, when we have that partnership with KidDoc. I know sometime you may have to, but I see a lot of them where, oh, no one mentioned KidDoc to me. Are you aware of this?
When a new student enrolls, they get a welcome email. And within the welcome email is information about KidStock, including a link. And then we also have a welcome one-pager that we attach that includes information about KidStock as well as a QR code. It includes other information as well about how to sign up for free and reduced lunch, a blurb about clear backpacks, as much info as we can. But every new family does get a welcome email that has a link right to KidStock.
But you're not a new family until you get all those documents in. So I'll talk prior to that.
Before that. Well, and so we are this year, we will have KidStock with us in the boardroom. Some of the days that we're here, they'll be here helping get families registered while they're here. Our priority for the student registration team during those days is to get the families enrolled, but they have asked if we could have them here with us. So we will be welcoming them during our rush here in the boardroom.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, before Megan takes her seat, I just want to commend Student Support Services and specifically your division, Megan, for the, it's been a team effort in terms of from last year to mapping out some new processes that can result in a more structured process and more conveniences for our staff. And I know that we've done a great job of communicating the ongoing nature of enrollment, right? And that it's not just at that rush time that you talk about. I know I had the opportunity to sit recently with, with Commissioner Washington for a check-in segment that Channel 23 publishes, and we were able to talk about where parents can go for that information. And, and with respect to KidDoc, you know, the way that that was structured, there are no direct calls to the district whatsoever this year, as of this year, because this is the third year of that partnership. So all of those services, and they are significant that we've received, are at no direct calls to the district. And so, but I will say, KidDoc will also be at the Back to School Bash on Saturday, but not just KidDoc. There are one of a gazillion partnerships that we have that will be represented at this Saturday's Bash, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Rockdale Career Academy. So be there if you're able, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin.
Yeah, Madam Chairwoman, I don't have any updates.
Thank you. Okay, would the board like to take a recess? Anyone, anyone? Okay. All right, the board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in June. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all board meetings held in June? Second. A motion approved to June board meetings is presented, has been made by Ms. North and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There is no old business, but there is new business. Dr. Oats, please provide your recommendation and rationales.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, with respect to the board annual training report, I will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the local school board governance annual training report for school year 2022-23 as presented. And the rationale is that the state board of education requires specific annual training for all local school board members in Georgia. Each board of education must submit their annual training report to the Georgia Department of Education, or commonly referred to as GADOE, by September 30th, 2023. In addition to attesting to training credits received during the fiscal year 23, the annual report requires that each board member affirms adherence to the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest provisions.
Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items, and the board voted to place the action items, except for the fiscal year 24 meal rate adoption, on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda? So moved.
Second, Akita.
A motion to approve the items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, all right. So do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the local school board governance annual training report for school year 2022-23 as presented? A motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation as presented has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is physical year 24 meal rate adoption. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt a meal rate of 20 meals for the 2023-24 fiscal year? So moved.
Second, Akita.
A motion has been made to, by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. The motion is approved by, by four to seven? Four to three? I'm sorry. Excuse me, thank you. Four to three. But motion carries. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? So moved. A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The over in the regular.
Which room?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a little bit. Yeah, I'm sure.
It's okay.
Yeah, you could use that. Mm-hmm.
Oh. Promoted. It is now eight twenty four and I call our session back to order. Do I hear a motion that the board finds that the superintendent has met his performance goes performance goals for the two zero twenty two twenty three school year and is entitled to an incentive bonus of three percent of his contracted base salary? Is there a motion for that?
Hi. Motion.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved by four to three. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Wait a second.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Joan. All in favor? Motion carries. Good night everyone.